Join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Call the meeting to order to show all council members are in attendance and would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight I have two proclamations. The first one is for education and sharing day. City of Council Bluffs Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas excellence in education is vital to the success of our city, and in Council Bluffs we seek to instill each child and adolescent with a good education, and whereas by preparing our students for the responsibilities and opportunities of the future, education develops the intellect through lessons in literacy, math, and science, and whereas the Reba Rabbi Menachem Sneerson of righteous memory dedicated his life to the betterment of mankind and tirelessly advocated for better education for all Americans, and whereas the Reba taught that education should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career, but also on character building with emphasis on universal moral and ethical values that are the basis of any peaceful civilized society, and whereas the United States Congress has established Education and Sharing Day USA as an annual national day to commemorate the Reba's achievements, the lessons in the vision he set forth are relevant for all of us today, therefore I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs Iowa, does hereby proclaim April 7th, which was the Education and Sharing Day 2017, as Education and Sharing Day in the City of Council Bluffs Iowa, and call upon educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to young people and to work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all with the seal of the City of Council Bluffs I do hereby proclaim. The second proclamation is for Library Week and reads as follows. City of Council Bluffs Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas libraries create potential possibilities within their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas libraries level the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, and libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities, and whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading, and librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals providing technology training and access to downloadable content like eBooks, and whereas libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of their race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries and librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, therefore I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs, do hereby proclaim April 9th through April 15th as National Libraries Week. Libraries transform in the City of Council Bluffs Iowa and encourage residents to visit a library during the week to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at our library here in Council Bluffs. With the seal of the City of Council Bluffs, I do hereby proclaim. All right, we have two public hearings. If you would like to address the council, please, four, three. Uh-oh.
A, B, and C.
I might have printed it earlier. Thanks. We have, as I was saying, we have three public hearings. If you'd like to address the council, please step forward to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you would have up to 10 minutes to address the council if you so desire. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6287, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Council Bluffs Iowa as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 of the 2015 municipal code by amending a PR planned residential overlay to property legally described as Lot 3 New Horizon subdivision as defined in chapter 15.28 as proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on a matter of resolution 17-73, resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application for the fiscal year 2018 state transit assistance as proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of resolution 17-77, resolution approving the urban revitalization plan for the Valley View Urban Revitalization Area as proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to the next item, could we revisit ordinance number 6287, which is 5A on the agenda, and possibly waive third consideration and pass that into law so it moves along with the urban revital area we just?
I'd make a motion to waive third.
I second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 6289, establishing the Valley View Urban Revitalization Area within the City of Council Bluffs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6290, to amend Title 13 Entitled Buildings and Construction by repealing Chapter 13.08 Entitled Building Code in its entirety and connecting a new Chapter 13.08 Entitled Building Code.
Move the ordinance and set public hearing for April 24th, 2017, 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6291, amending Chapter 13 Entitled Buildings and Construction by amending Chapter 13.06 Entitled Residential Code.
Is there a motion?
Move the ordinance and set public hearing for April 24th, 2017, 7:00 p.m. Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 62, I'm sorry, ordinance 6288, to amend Chapter 17 Housing by amending Chapter 17.01.010 Definitions to amend the paragraph Rental Property to include additional members as a family.
Motion to approve the ordinance with defining family as an amendment including the following: spouse, children, parents, grandchildren, grandparents, brothers, sister, or dependents of the owner of record.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I think this is a fair compromise that accomplishes the intent of the ordinance, and I support it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 17-74, certifying the Drainage District Assessments for the Fiscal Year 2018 with Potawatomi County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the opposed, same sign.
Resolution 17-75, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Midwest floor coverings for the Council Bluffs Library Floor, Flooring Replacement Project.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
Resolution 17-76, to apply a planned residential overlay to property legally described as Lot 3 New Horizon subdivision.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 17-78, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Driver Sewer and Water, Inc., for the Walnut Grove Subdivision Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I think this is a...
I have something to say on that.
Oh, sure, please, please.
Yeah, come up here to the...
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dylan Waszkowski. I live at 2 Scarlet Oaks Road in Council Bluffs. I'm the owner of Bluffs Paving and Utility Company. Basically, I just kind of wanted to clarify at the letting where the Walnut Grove subdivision project was let, there was an irregularity which, in my eyes, gave the winning bidder an unfair advantage. There were missing pages from their bid, and I believe they're pretty important pages. They were signature pages. And we came in second place where many times, most times, the standard is, it gets thrown out. You know, whoever comes in next gets the job. So I'm just kind of wondering if you guys would like to clarify your standard on that.
Are you aware of that?
Yes, I just want to think it is the pages that were not signed, dealt with, or were left out, were dealt with the equal opportunity employment issues.
Yes.
And I was called when that was discovered. I discussed that briefly with the city clerk and I think possibly the engineer, or engineer on the project. The question in my mind, when that, something like that, a technical error occurs in the bid, does that really give any unfair advantage to the person that is requesting essentially us to accept his bid absent those pages signed? And with, if it had been a bond missing, or something, where somebody would have saved some money by not including it in the package, but the forms we're talking about are pretty boilerplate documents that are signed with every agreement.
And I understand that. You know, the thing about it is, is we've been in that situation before where we've left out, you know, a document that was mostly clerical. In most cases, especially, I mean, anytime with the DOT, anything like that, you get thrown out, no questions asked. And, you know, it's basically, I think they're thinking, and most of the time, the city's thinking on that with having a strict rule on that, is if you can't turn in a bid correctly, why should we give you the work? And so that's just kind of why, you know, we'd like to clarify that, because we've been thrown out, like I said, for similar things, lost jobs for similar things, and I believe that it was an unfair advantage because the bid was read after the page was noticed missing, which gave the city an unfair advantage by picking and choosing because they saw that they were $13,000 low. So...
When asked the question, I did not know who was low, high, or indifferent. I was just asked the question regarding those missing documents at the time of the opening. And the question I always ask, or look at when that occurs, is whether or not that really gives any financial advantage to the person who did not comply to the letter of the bid. And if it gave no fair advantage, or unfair advantage to a third party, it's something that would have to be cleared up. If he's not capable of signing off on that document at the time of closing, then he doesn't get the contract anyway. So that's the call I've made. It's consistent with calls I've made over the last 30 years.
Yeah, and I get that. You know, so basically, you're saying that you guys do get some leeway because in the plan documents, it does say, shall, we shall throw out, which is key, you know, and to stick to your own word on that, that means...
There's also a paragraph in nearly every bid...
It's a blanket clause. I understand that, yeah.
That states that we have the right to weigh if any technical irregularities with the bid, with the submitted bid. And that's the paragraph I rely upon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I believe we have a motion and a second.
I just wanted to briefly say that, you know, this is a great project. Again, it's creating a residential, a grouping of more houses in an area where the Walnut Grove School used to be, and it's going to allow college, young adults out at the college to build two of them a year in the trades program. And it's important to find great experience for people that want to get into the trades. It's a good living, and more middle-class jobs, and allows to help the neighborhood continue to grow rather than have an open area of blight, which would be the case if the property sat vacant. And I did want to say specifically, part of this is funded by home funds. Home is an acronym that I'm not going to be able to accurately spell out off the top of my head, but in essence, it's one of many federal funding sources that, from your federal tax money that you and I pay, that go back to various programs to help with housing for middle-class folks to get jobs and for them to live, and for folks who want to join the middle class by working hard and getting a decent job that'll help them pay more to put food on the table for their kids and their spouse. And it's one of many things in this time of, on a national level where we, you know, we don't have a lot of money to spend on a lot of various things, but this is one of the, there are a couple proposals to eliminate or reduce significantly the amount of federal money that goes to programs such as this that help create middle-class jobs and housing for folks to get on the housing ladder. And if you are concerned about that, as I am, that those sorts of things would be cut significantly or eliminated, I'd encourage you to contact your federal representatives who control that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 17-79, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc., for engineering services in connection with the WPCP Manhole Number One Rehab.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 17-80, to establish a financial hardship policy relating to ambulance charges and/or copayment amounts.
Motion to approve with the following amendment on the first page of the financial hardship policy found in the packet at page 335. Under the heading Financial Hardship Criteria, second sentence reads as follows: "In making the decision whether to waive the fee, the city will compare the amount earned, living expenses, assets, debts, and eligibility for medical assistance," end quote. And also that in direction to staff that in preparation of the application form for this policy, should it pass, that it would take into account all applicable privacy laws in such a consent form or otherwise.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Basically, just briefly, that's a lot of legal speak. Medicaid, which is my day job, as it happens, this is a policy that would give the department, already the department exercises its discretion in very limited circumstances, circumstances, rather, as it turns out, that when someone genuinely cannot pay their ambulance bill, to waive it. There are folks, of course, who can afford to pay it. I'm not saying it's always easy, but they, but folks can. And then there are some folks who are so poor that they're eligible for Medicaid and they can't pay it, but the federal and the state governments provide, among other things, on Medicaid. They provide ambulance services when it's medically necessary. So, and then there are folks stuck in the middle who make too much for Medicaid but don't make enough to be able to afford the ambulance bill without, you know, paying for the rent, or the mortgage, or for food. And so what this does is clarify that the intent, which is, you know, if you're poor enough, crudely put, if you're poor enough that our federal and state tax money would pay for the ambulance bill, that it'd make clear that we would charge the state and federal government for that so that you don't have to pay for that out of your local property taxes. That's it for that clarification. And the other thing on the application form, there was just some rather complex federal privacy law, a couple privacy laws that just needed to be addressed a little bit more on the form. So that's all that amendment does. But it would make clear that, as amended, if the amendment were to pass, and then the law were to pass, the resolution were to pass too, you know, it would give the city official discretion from the council and the mayor in cases in which somebody's stuck between being, making too much to get Medicaid help, but not enough to be able to afford the ambulance bill, that in those rare cases, we'd have the ability, with good cause shown, to waive that fee if someone genuinely can't pay it and there's no source available to pay it, which I support.
Any other discussion?
I just want to give a little bit of a shout-out to Chief James and to Mr. Wade for taking the time and the care to put this on the agenda in an effort to memorialize what we've been doing in practice for a while. And this allows the public to see how we approach certain types of business, and I appreciate their intent to provide some light and ratification to this process.
You would give some attention to your, acknowledgement to your employee in finance department, who actually did most of the league work on this.
Fair, good.
Yeah, what was her?
Judy.
Very good.
Who's new in the treasurer's office, has helped design this, so already paying benefits for the city, so...
Briefly, if I may add, and I want to say that my amendment is not a criticism whatsoever of the draft policy as written. It's just, it just so happens that it's my specialty and my day job, and there was a couple tweaks that I thought could improve it even more that I wouldn't have known had I not had the job I have now. So, but overall, I think the draft was very good. I just think this makes it just even a little bit better.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 17-81, confirming the appointment of Catherine Knott in the position of Director of Finance with the City of Council Bluffs and approving the wage and benefit package offered to her.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Very, very well-qualified nominee, and we're very lucky to have her, and welcome to her.
The personnel decisions, they carry a lot of work and a lot of evaluation, and hard choices have to be, have to be made. And we asked for some information at the study session, which the mayor spent some time in going over the particulars on the selection process in detail. And I'm well-satisfied that they've made the best determination that they can with the applicants that have applied. So I appreciate the mayor's explanation of how we got to this point and all the hard work and good evaluation that went into it.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellation, 9A, B, and C inclusive.
Motion to approve applications for permits and cancellations, A, B, and C.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Anyone from the audience?
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue, bike trail again. And I just wanted to know if there's any update on the guys' meeting with Iowa West on Broadway.
Received an email from Pete to Opana today. It is on their agenda to discuss further on April 18th.
That's going to be here at this meeting?
That will not be. That's at their private board meeting.
It's not going to be open to the public?
For them to discuss. We will not be there.
Oh, you won't be, okay.
Yeah, that's an Iowa West meeting.
Iowa West.
Iowa West Board meeting. So they will, they will discuss what they would like the next further steps to be on their side.
Another thing I was going to bring up is, we have a whole bunch of park land that is undeveloped or in our city limits. Is there any way that some of that can be sold off and maybe small neighborhood parks with just playground equipment put in, in the city?
You know, we've got a bunch, we have a bunch of property that we've acquired through the years, and most specifically through 2008 in the crash of the real estate market that the city picked up through what's called 657 AA actions that we've been trying to liquidate. You know, it sounds great for neighborhood parks with swing sets, but unfortunately, then that comes with a maintenance issue, which is kind of what we're dealing with on the, just the vacant land. And so we're trying to, we have a strategy, and we've gotten rid of a lot of the land. We need to get rid of a lot more, either to the adjacent property owners or to a residential home builder that could use that. And then we just kind of have targeted where we are in the parks. And really, I think the council's kind of expressed a desire for the next park to focus on the southeast side of Council Bluffs, which really doesn't have a park, and so...
I don't have one around me either.
Yeah.
Fairmont Park, you tore out all the old playground equipment. Now we only have one place up there now. I got grandkids. There used to be some down on the bottom, and there used to be some at the top. Is there anything in the future where there's going to be any put up at those places again?
I don't have a good answer for you, because it's the first, but I'll find out. I know we put in the...
Splash Park.
The Splash Park that's...
That was new playground equipment down below, but, on that, on top of the hill, but you removed all the equipment where you come in on the bottom on Fairmont, and up on top of the hill where the tower is, there used to be playground equipment there, and that's all gone now.
Yeah. Splash Park, pretty phenomenal, and I think I'm right on this number, but I may not be totally accurate, but the waterworks agreed to pay for the water. Last year, I think it was four million gallons of water, so I think they gulped a little when they heard that number, but that's how popular it is.
Yeah, but I know, but there's other times when they're being, having a picnic in a different area of the park, and it'd be nice for their kids to have someplace to go.
Yeah, we're working on it. We're going in and cleaning up the scrub bushes, and I'm sure at some point they'll put in a playground. But I don't have a good answer for you, but I'll get you one when that's, when that someday is going to be.
Are you guys ever going to send somebody down on a rope and swing back and forth to cut the trees off?
Volunteer. We'll take volunteers. You have to sign a waiver first, though.
Well, the idea, actually, one time they had somebody come in and cut them.
Really?
You really?
I've heard about that.
That sounds scary.
It's getting to where they're growing up to where you can't even look off there anymore.
Used to be able to see the Dutch House, yeah.
That's all I like.
I burned it when I was a kid, but that's another story. Anybody else?
My name is Herb Christiansen. I'm at 620 East Pierce. Hopefully, all of you have been around Council Bluffs a long time, and you remember maybe Playland Park. If you think of it, the west end of Council Bluffs, Council Bluffs has sort of been a stepchild. And the west end and the south end, in my opinion, have received... And the west end and the south end, in my opinion, have received less quality attention than maybe some other parts of the city. I sent an email, and I got involved in the process maybe late, but the medians on that West Broadway, to me, would provide a lot of quality of life for the citizens, not only on the west end, but anybody who drives Broadway. Now, the medians, there are many options. I know we had, the squeaky wheel often gets the most attention, and there are hundreds of businesses along that section. And the way the plan looked, some areas would not be affected much by the median. And other areas, there are people, I don't think they even live in Council Bluffs, that are not focused on the quality of life, not only for the current residents, but it could be Bruce's grandkids, or my grandkids, or people that aren't born that are going to suffer from the decision made on the medians. And I appreciate your input that there's a lot of other things being done, but medians in there with any design similar to what we have had, to me, would reduce that whole temperature on that west end. And I'm not talking about Fahrenheit degrees, but the temperature there is such that it is almost a return to the micromidget days of Playland Park, if you drive that. If you've seen, if you've driven it at various hours, and I have over the years, and I recently have been on there a lot of times after nine o'clock at night, and I don't understand how people can just look and maybe make a bad choice, pull out anyway as fast as they can across five lanes, and then they turn their head and don't look like nothing is going to happen. It'll never happen to me. So, by reducing the temperature on West Broadway, I'm saying the medians would slow things down, they would get that traffic thinking more about what they're going to do. They would also provide an aesthetic value to all the residents of Council Bluffs through the removal of pollution and just the beauty that we have begun to implement in our city. So, I'm really disappointed that we have listened to two people I know of, I know two businesses, and one of them, again, I believe, does not even live in the area, and the business is going to look at money, only money. They're not, they don't care if I have quality of life here or not, or any of you. They just don't care about our quality of life. It's up to us to take care of ourselves. And so, there are ways, and I, in the email I sent you, when you turn out of Hy-Vee on Madison Avenue, you can only go one direction. I can't go across three or four lanes there just because it's a convenient thing to me or a hurry-up thing. I have to use my brain, pull out, and go that direction, or I go to a different controlled intersection. I think that's what you'd call something with a light, all right? Now, other cities that have done this, and people have made U-turns right there on Broadway as well at lights. I can't say I haven't done it, you know, because I have. I think I look everywhere, and I go ahead and do it, because, I mean, I can, right? Now, if the policeman is there, this officer sees me doing that, maybe I made a mistake. But I can do it. So, if we can control the intersection, we can use some of that wide space maybe to make a U-turn. We can put in the turn lane for these absentee businessmen that are interested only in money, taking the money from our citizens and not caring about the quality of life for them, their children or grandchildren. So, I am not asking, I am imploring you, imploring each of you, and hopefully, it won't take an election, but I'm imploring you to rethink your position on that. Work with not only the foundation on getting the money back, that we really want that money, not for the money, but for the quality of life. We want to work with the foundation to get that back in our pocket or in our spending envelope. But I want you to work with a couple of the businesses that complained. And again, I'm only aware of two, but I don't know everything. But I do know that the quality of life can be a lot better for every resident in Council Bluffs if traffic is slowed down there, if we make people think about what they're doing driving. So, that's what I'm asking you to do. I'm imploring you to rethink what can be done. Get with our city engineer and ask him, what can we do? Because there are businesses there, or there are facilities along Broadway, I don't think they would give a hoot about a median there. Thomas Jefferson High School would be one. Maybe some of the medical clinics would be one. I don't know that any of the banks complained. Used car dealers, shoot, if you're looking for a used car and you miss it, you're going to go down, you're going to make that U-turn anyway because they're going to give you the best deal. So, I implore you, and I could mention each and every one of your names, but I'll skip that. I implore you to revisit your thinking on this and think of us, think of yourself and your kids who may live on that west end, and their quality of life, and take that temperature on that raceway back there. I really think, I love the improvements that are going on up there. I think it's much needed. My gosh, what a, what a place. So, I think you guys are doing a lot of good things. I think you do consider these things, but it never hurts to admit, to admit, admit that we might need to revisit something and see if we can't take a middle ground between a business owner that is only thinking about his pocketbook and Iowa West, or I think it's Iowa West Foundation, right? Take a middle ground between them, but think of my kids, my grandkids. Think about how you would feel if someone in your family came home or didn't come home because somebody had peeled out or crossed five lanes without looking, or with looking, and then turning their head, because it does happen. If I can go and get, give me, give me two weeks, if I can get two hundred signatures, I'll do it, if you'll commit to voting a different way. You set a challenge for me. I don't have a business that I can lay these in, just petition this. Come on in, sign this. I'll give you two dollars off if you sign this, you know, something. I don't have that. I don't have the time to go and get signatures, but I will. Just one of you tell me, I'll have that petition here. All three of you tell me, I'll get a petition here and I'll get the signatures, because I've talked, I substitute, substitute teach in the school district. I've not found one person that I've talked to, any adults in the school, that are favor, in favor of no medians. Every one of them are in favor of the medians. Hopefully, they've called Jody, and she's taken their messages, because they said that they and their husband would call, because I said, if I go up there alone, it's just going to be some crank or quack who got here too late. But think of me, think of me. Don't think of that businessman that's not here putting the money in his pocket at the expense of our future generations and at the expense of the whole city. There's a way to engineer this and get it done so it works for everybody. Right now, it's not working for the citizens of Council Bluffs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone from the council? With that, we're adjourned. Have a great week.